All right, Emma. You're Emma, right? Yay! Uh, Brooklyn is here. Patty is here. And Ella. Emma, there we go. Let's have a round of applause. Yay! Okay. And they each have, um, a prize on the desk. There you go. Patty, there you are. You got all this good stuff now. Ella, Ella and Emma. All right, you guys are confused. And I would like, also like to recognize Councilmember Green. She has been a champion for water conservation and education in our community. And so if you all will help me in expressing our appreciation to her as well, so thank you. And from what I am told, there are still showerheads and other types of water conservation things. And I'm sure with our rates, you'll probably want to do that. So I'm not trying to make light of it, but I'm just saying it's a good idea to maybe look into that stuff right now. So, thank you ladies. Okay, yeah. You get one more prize too, over here. You're good. Come on down. Thank you. This is for milk feet. This is clear. Very good. Next. Ta-da. Ta-da. And ta-da. All right. And congrats to your parents. All right. Um, very good. And I think, again, I just think it's important that we teach our young people those lessons of conservation, recycling, and all those things that maybe some of us didn't grow up with and now we're in the reason or in the situation we are now. All right. Um, this is our audience participation time. Normally you do have to be on the agenda or have called the office. But I really think that there are people who come to speak and sometimes don't get recognized. So we do have a two-minute time limit. If there's anybody here that would just like to address the council for whatever reason, please come forward at this time, state your name, and then what you, what your business is. So, anybody here? Do that.
Yeah. My name's Kenny Brennan. And the reason I'm here is we had some property here in Wellington, 10-3 East Woodway. Had some real nice walnut trees growing on it. And one of them got, well, they both got fungus on them and one of them started to die. And, uh, my wife and I were going to cut it down. As y'all know, my wife paints and we're very busy. Uh, we had planned on coming and cutting that tree down this Saturday. And lo and behold, Wednesday, she calls and says, Kenny, somebody's cut your tree down. And it was on my property. And lo and behold, the neighbor, he lives right across the road from me, uh, has cameras and so he got to see who it was that cut it down. And it's the company that Wellington has hired to cut trees down in Wellington. And now there are two walnut trees right there, side by side. We planted them at the same time my dad and I did in 1968. One of them was dead and one of them wasn't. You know, Lori and I had plans for the walnut and, uh, somebody else beat me to it. I feel like it isn't right. Evidently, this company is hired by the city. Uh, I want to know what gives them the right to come on your property and cut some, cut your trees down.
Certainly. Um, did anybody give you any kind of notice or anything? Were the trees impeding any kind of?
No ma'am.
Okay.
I mow it every week. Uh, you can drive by there anytime you want. You can see it's always spiffy, looking good. Trees are picked up, branches picked up. Uh, you know, I don't know.
What was the address again, Mr. Brennan?
10-3 East Woodway.
East Woodway?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
So you, you agree that the trees need to come down as to the fact that they, they did them without permission? They took the wood? Is that right?
Yeah, they took everything. They took the wood. They had no permission. Nobody called me and notified me.
Were they on the easement?
Yes ma'am, they were. They're right on the five-foot line. But mine standing, uh, city has a right to the five-foot easement, but they don't have a right to the property on the five-foot easement. Am I not correct?
I, I really think.
Isn't that about the way it goes?
I am not for sure either. So what I think we'll do is we'll have, um, Mr. Eckert and, and Mr. Norton work into this matter and see what we can do. But I appreciate you coming forward and, um, I, I'm sorry.
What do I got to do to keep you from stealing my stuff?
From, from cutting on and cutting your trees down?
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah.
Good question. I think we'll, uh, we'll have to look into that. But if you'll work with us, we'll certainly try to.
I'd appreciate some help because, you know, I mean, I, I wouldn't come in anybody else's yard and cut their tree down.
Right.
I know Mr. Valentine has a whole bunch of walnut trees behind his yard, but I don't dare go back there and cut them down. In the alley behind his barber shop, there are plenty of them.
All right.
But anyway.
Well, thank you for coming forward, Mr. Brennan. I appreciate it and I'm, I'm sorry.
I will be looking for some feedback because I will be back if I don't hear nothing.
Well, I believe we can learn from every situation and that's one of those things that, um, maybe there just isn't, uh, the correct, um, protocol in place or policy in place. So that's why we want to hear from you. I, I don't know that there's anything we can do to, of course, remedy your situation with your trees, but, but certainly we can learn from this situation. So I appreciate you coming forward, so.
Okay, I do have, uh, pictures of who it was that took them, so if that'll help any, uh, that'd be great.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't understand what gives somebody the right to do that.
Well, and I don't know what the policy is, but like Councilmember Green said, if it isn't the easement and maybe, um, you know, maybe it was measured and it wasn't the easement and, and there was... Mr. Norton, can you shed any light on this?
Well, I can say that if it's in the easements, then we, if it's in the power lines or anywhere near that could be construed as dangerous, potentially dangerous, could be trimmed back. As far as taking the whole thing down, I don't know about that. Um, I've never actually seen that before.
Well, there's no power line anywhere around it.
Huh?
So that wasn't no problem there. And they're not even, you know, it wasn't even close to the road.
Well, what we'll probably just have to do is get with the tree company and see what their, what their instructions are, where they felt that, you know, they needed to do what they did. Um, again, I, you know, unfortunately, I don't know that it'll do anything to bring your trees back, but.
Well, it can bring them back.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, I'm saying at least we can learn from the situation and hopefully prevent this from happening again. So again, I appreciate you coming forward. So, Mr. Norton, you'll help me with this matter?
Yes. Give me your information, sir.
What information do you need?
Phone number.
I got a road back down there on the deal.
Okay, yes, you're on it. Okay, very good.
My engine booked.
Thanks, Kenny.
I'll bear leave for a little trouble. See ya.
All right, sorry about that. Uh, anyone else want to address the council tonight? All right, very good. We'll move on to our consent agenda. All right, it's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we'll move on to our reports of mayor and council. We'll start to my left this meeting, Mr. Eckert.
Uh, I'd just like to tell the city's electric department to give them some kudos for, uh, on the 11th when they had to switch over the, the power from one switch to another that the gas turbine power plant out there kicked on and worked as designed. And I believe that, uh, nobody had any kind of power failure or had to reset the clocks or anything. So I think it's a, a great testament to what that, um, facility out there does and provides and everything. So I just want to give them a heads-up and kudos.
Do you get anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, so, hey, um, I wish somebody from the electric department was here tonight. I did get a call today. Um, we've got a light out there close to 115 South High and that light is a really, really important light, especially with these kids going to these swim team meets and stuff in the evening. A lot of the parents park at the armory and they walk. And we've got block here, it's a dead light unless that light is on and they've been having some trouble with it. And I was notified of that. And I did call the electric department and they said they would take care of it. Now, I've not got back to them. I'm sure they may have done it, but if they have it, they can get that light switched out, that would be really good. And I've got one other thing here. It has nothing to do with city business, but, uh, from time to time in years past, I have always spoke of veterans and some of the veterans we have in this town and some of the things that they've done. Well, we've got a gentleman that lives in this town, Mr. Paul Yubara, that's celebrating his 90th birthday on the 27th of this month. And what makes Mr. Yubara unique is the fact that we had three beachheads on D-Day, Omaha, Normandy, and Utah Beach that were stormed by American soldiers. Those three beaches, they lost 25,000 men. This guy was on Utah Beach. And, uh, he is an incredible individual and, uh, he's a quiet, timid man. And I just wanted to make note of this, uh, in this council meeting and to the public that's out there. He's got a lot of guys out here that's done a lot of unusual things and, and gracious things and commanding things in World War II. And, uh, uh, Mr. Yubara won the Purple Heart with Cluster, the Bronze Star with Cluster, and the Gallantry Badge of Medal. And he also got the CIV. He was wounded in action. He spent 30 days in a hospital. Some of the things that his children have put in this letter, uh, are absolutely incredible. They, uh, he was wounded and a few days later, he met with deadly fire with the enemy and in the confusion, American planes accidentally killed most of the men in his unit. At that point, Mr. Yubara serves as the head scout, a position designed to draw fire from the enemy in order to pinpoint their location. But what his children don't know is this. And this is an incredible story. That man was on a Higgins boat and when those doors went down, I don't need to tell you what happened. He went over to the side with nothing but his helmet and his rifle. That's all he had. And he said for a few brief moments, it was nothing but silence. He's underwater. When he came up, he heard bullets, bombs. There was an American soldier floating in front of him. He used that body to get on that beachhead. And Paul told me he could count the rounds going into that. And when he got on that beachhead, do you know what he said? He looked at that man and he said, "I never thought I'd forget his face." I didn't know whether he was black, white, or Hispanic. I had no idea. But I never thought I would forget his face. And he said, "I did forget it." But you know what he told me? He said, "When I see him in heaven, he'll smile at me and I'll know it." That's the incredible story. This guy's celebrating his birthday on the 27th of this month. He's a very humble man. I've worked on this guy for years and it's amazing the stories that you come out of these people. And I just wanted to share that with you. You know, look at the rights you have here. Actually, they're privileges. Guys like him made this possible up here and that right over there possible. So I have, thank you very much, Paul. Thank you for your service to your country.
Never, never be afraid to share those stories. Thank you. Mr. Buck?
Do I follow that?
Well, I don't know. Mine can be a group of us, so.
Well, mine's pretty simple. Uh, about three weeks ago, I was, uh, I live in a part of town that's being assaulted by the gas company. Uh, we have new lines going and entering which direction. I don't have many of you folks all have the same problem. Or as they say, progress creates problems. But at any rate, what they did to our yard was something that I guess you can forgive them for, but they were also had to go down the alley. And they did not use the boring equipment to do that. They just dug a trench right down the middle of it and it was an absolute mess. Uh, I think I told Roy this story, but I'll tell the rest of you. I just calmly called the city street department, done ahold of Darren Marcus. Told him I applied because it just happens that I have a garage that empties onto the, to the alley and it's only my wife can get in and out of the property. And, um, I just said something to him. I said, "Whenever you get to..." Well, within an hour, it turns out it was the gas company's equipment that was there and they fixed the alley where we could easily get in and out. Not only that, within a couple of, three hours of their fixing the, the problems, uh, Darren came by. I stopped by. I happened to be on the driveway and he just wanted to know if everything looked all right and how everything was going. And I thought to myself, that's just, uh, that's pretty classy for a city to do that. So, and I might add that that was, um, heard while I'm sitting on the field. So, to say so. And, uh, to be frank, I was quite impressed. I haven't had the chance yet to get in front of Darren again and, and thank him for that, that department. All he had to do was make a phone call, but he didn't. But he also followed up. I think that's, uh, I think that's kudos.
Very much so. Thank you for sharing that story as well. All right, Ms. Green?
I'm sorry I don't have any stories.
Well, good, because I can't handle much. All right. Ms. Green? I have my... Okay. Ms. Wada?
I have, ma'am.
All right. Too good. I'm getting, I'm getting my emotions under control now. Um, I just have a couple of things that I want to say. Speaking of kudos, this Sumner County Guide, the new one, just came out. And I want to thank Wellington Daily News team for putting this together. It's a great visitor's guide, um, for not only Wellington, but Sumner County. And, uh, we all have a golf area up here and it's just, it's really neat. And also, um, want to say how, how proud I am of the Wellington Golf Group. Um, we have got a huge tournament going on right now. It is the, help me fill, it's the Junior Golf Championship.
It's Golf Association Junior.
Yeah, it's a state, uh, statewide tournament. There are 140 young people participating in this golf tournament. And so we're talking many of them with their parents and their families coming to town. So this is a huge deal for Wellington, um, and Sumner County because I know that they're not all being able to stay here, uh, in Wellington. But, um, the golf course looks great and I just want to say a huge kudos to Mr. Harrison and his crew, um, because I know they're working hard. Carson McGrand is working overtime, so. Anyway, but I just, I think that's exceptional and, and the, the state spotlight is on Wellington, Kansas this week as far as junior golf. So that's great. Excellent. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, we'll move on to reports of city officials. It looks like our first item is the Kansas Star Scholarship Board. Mr. Eckert, I'll let you handle that.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Former Mayor Roger Stahlbacher was a member of the Kansas Star Scholarship Board. Uh, his term ended June 11th. And the Kansas Star Scholarship Board meets the second Thursday of each month, uh, which means we have two council meetings, one tonight, uh, at which we could appoint Roger's replacement in time to July 9th meeting, um, of that board. Uh, we've had one recommendation, uh, for that position, Colby Zika. I don't, I don't know Colby, but anyway.
I know him pretty well.
Okay, that's... And, uh, that was submitted and, um, we're asking for a direction from the council as to proceed here and if you have any other nominations or whatever. We would like to have that board appointed as soon as possible for that position.
Right. So that was more information type thing, or do we have to take action? Do you, does anybody feel strongly one way or the other, or... I'm pretty fond of the guy myself. Colby Zika is my nephew, by the way.
Well, does, does anybody, did anybody know about this or that, other than, than the city people? Would we, would it be okay to do it tonight or should we, should we tell people that?
It's... Or is Colby, is Colby aware of it?
It's the city board.
No. It's an appointment.
I mean, it's about nothing to do with the city.
There might be somebody out there that, I'm all for Colby and I'd make the motion to do it tonight, but it's that problem, is all I'm asking.
Well, I think it's an appointment and I think that Colby's already been approached by Mr. Long. Am I correct to say that?
Uh, I don't know about that. I do know that, uh, Roger had, had approached him and asked.
Oh, okay.
So, so that's, uh, anyways, all we know at this point. Only, only Colby. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second that we appoint Colby Zika to, um, serve as our representative of the Kansas Star Scholarship Board. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right, we will let Mr. Zika know. He gets to go to the casino for meetings only. All right. Uh, next thing is a sale of parcel Setters Creek Edition. Mr. Eckert?
Okay, we've been working on this one for a while. Tony Farley's here in the audience and, uh, uh, he has a home in the Setters Creek Edition and he has, um, offered $1,000 for a parcel there across the street from him. Uh, it is, uh, Setters Creek Edition, uh, S1432, uh, block one, lot 23. Uh, the address is 818 Setters Circle. A large portion of this, uh, of this facility is, or this land is not suitable for building because of a large majority of the land lies within a floodway. Um, but so I feel this is a fair price considering, uh, we haven't had any activity out in that area for a long time. A lot of those lots are too small to build on, but this one is, is fairly, fairly usable. Uh, we have no other interest in any of the lots in that area and, um, Mr. Farley is aware that he would be responsible for the specials from the day of purchase forward. Um, and with the sale of the property, at least we'll be able to recoup some of the specials and we will not have the responsibility of maintaining the mowing and, and on that parcel and, and any other maintenance that we usually do. Um, I had, uh, shared this with our city attorney, Mike Brown, and, um, I think we, we should go ahead with this. It's, it's my recommendation.
If I may, someone help me. I think we sold a lot, yeah, nearby, for a thousand dollars, same situation.
Yeah.
Maybe 18 months ago?
Yeah.
Somewhere near there. How many lots are left?
We've got, yeah, four, five, four, five, like Mr. Eckert said, most of them are in floodway. I'm unbelievable.
Well, I'm going to sell this lot.
All right, it's been moved in second that we sell the lot out of Setters Creek to Mr. Farley. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no? All right, Mr. Farley? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you. Yes, absolutely, thank you. We appreciate that.
We've got more if you need any.
Take the specials away and I'll make...
Have your people call our people.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farley. All right, and one last thing under reports of city officials. Verizon Water Tower lease agreement memo from Mr. Eckert.
Okay, this is, um, we're not asking for the action tonight. Uh, city attorney, uh, Mike Brown and, uh, our staff are working on changes to the contract we received from Verizon regarding the cell tower service on the water tower located at the Roundabout. Um, we're looking at some major changes to the contract, uh, which will require some more negotiation with Verizon. And, uh, we will keep informed as of progress. Uh, hopefully we can wrap it up by the next week. That's, that's our goal. So just for information.
So they pay us to have their stuff on our...
Well, a little difference of opinion. We have something that they want.
Mm-hmm.
We received a contract from them and let's just say we think it's, um, it just needs to be revised a little bit in terms of dollars and cents and the length of the contract. Who gets a say on what?
All right.
So we're going to go get back with them and we'll see what happens. But again, we have something they want.
Right. And they're a big company. All right, very good. All right, is that everything from our city officials? So now we have a couple of hearings. Um, first one is on 611 West 13th. So I will open the hearing for 611 West 13th. Is there anyone here to address us on this property? Hello, sir?
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm Jason Ray and I own that property. And I've been, uh, remodeling the house, trying to get it fixed back up. And I got all the taxes paid up on it. Did that Friday. So I would lighten up my house and off me door down.
Mr. Norton, do you have any?
Well, uh, if you're doing any demo construction, if you're remodeling, um, you need to be giving permits through our office, uh, making contact with us. Um, and so, um, I know that you made contact with our office once before after the hearing was set, uh, but there was no follow-up. So we hadn't heard back from you and we didn't know what was going on. So that's why we pursued, uh, the hearing tonight. So, um, if you're willing to work with us and bring everything up to minimum safety code, um, then we, uh, we'll go with you.
Go on.
Yeah, just call our office tomorrow and, and we'll walk you through it.
Okay. And I can make it because I work on a property right next to him. He hasn't been over there. He's kept the yard mowed, um, cleaned up, debris up the front porch, secured the front door. Doors and windows. So he hasn't been over there working and it does look, uh, considered better than it did when he started. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And if you'll just keep airing the loop and we'll get you, get you back, get you off of this list. All right, so I'm going to close the hearing for 611 West 13th and open the hearing for 613 West 12th. Um, do we have any here, anybody here that wants to talk about the property at 613 West 12th? Mr. Norton?
Hey, now, turn this one on.
No. I think Nate would appreciate if you would just go up to the microphone for our audi, our television audience.
Uh, well, uh, sorry, mate. I'm a little, uh, six and my voice is a little froggy and hard to hear or understand. Uh, 613 West 12th. Since the hearing was set on May 19th, we have not heard back from the interested party, Cheryl Meese, who is the daughter of the deceased owner, Lawrence Bowman. Right now, the building is currently appraised $4,810 with the land being worth $4,460 for a total of $9,270. There are four years worth of back property taxes owed for a total of $771.38, along with special assessment taxes from 2011, 2012, total of $190 for a total tax allowances of $961.38. As I said, we haven't heard anything from any interested party. The property continues to degrade. Uh, the roof, the specialty's in terrible shape. Uh, the siding is worn and not tight to the elements. The, uh, outbuilding is lean and, uh, the structure has been compromised. So I would, uh, I would suggest moving forward on the accommodations.
Okay. And explain just quickly what the process is so then if we hear nothing, obviously tonight, then the process, then that person has...
If you, if the council decides to, uh, move forward on the resolution to make the residence safe and, uh, demolish it, uh, then they have a 30-day window, the owner does, uh, from the time that the resolution is published. Okay, that'll be next week in the local paper where they have 30 days to get everything that they want out of the residence and secure anything that they need. Uh, from there, it goes to open bid, which is two weeks. And then after that, two weeks, whoever's awarded the contract, then demolishes the house.
Okay. Very good.
Again, to, uh, just make sure that every, they have plenty of time. They have several weeks to, uh, to secure anything they need or anything they want out of there and...
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Norton. Okay. So anybody else want to talk about 613 West 12th? Hearing done.[1663.13] Close the public hearing. All right, we have no ordinances tonight, but we do have several resolutions. Mr. Eckert, do I need to read the notes here about Resolution 5691?
I'll just read the notes.
Okay, just in case. We do have a resolution or a note here on our agendas for this evening that 5691 was assigned to the resolution that was adopted at the June 9th, 2015, Special Meeting Regarding Authorization to Engage in Negotiations with the Healthcare Authority of the City of Wellington for the Purpose of Filing a Lean Pursuit to the Uniform Commercial Code. The next resolution adopted will be 5692. This is... this involves our action that we took last week involving our situation with SRMC and trying to get a positive outcome for that situation. All right, moving on, our next resolution is a resolution authorizing the city's continued participation in the Kansas Power Pool, a municipal energy agency, by approving the Second amended operating agreement. I believe Mr. Myers and Mr. Chesney are here to visit with us about that. Who gets to go first? All right, Mr. Myers. It's kind of a weird dynamic, because I'm here and I'm out there. Welcome back.
Thank you, it's nice to be here.
Good, good.
Carl Myers, representing the Kansas Power Pool. On these two resolutions you have in front of you this evening, the first one is the resolution amending the operating agreement between the Kansas Power Pool and the City of Wellington. The operating agreement, it sets forth basically the relationship, the... How you might say, the functioning relationship between the city and the Kansas Power Pool. And there are a few amendments to that agreement that the Board Directors of the Kansas Power Pool has approved for presenting to you. And I might add that for both of these agreements, there are 23 members of the pool, and certainly the City of Wellington is one of the founding members of the pool. And for these agreements to be adopted by the Kansas Power Pool, each of the 23 municipal utility governing bodies must approve the or adopt their resolutions for these agreements. But this ordinance basically sets forth the duties of the membership committee and heretofore KPP has operated with what is called a pool committee, or sometimes called an operating committee since its inception 10 years ago. And that committee was very active in the first several years of the pool in dealing with day-to-day operations of the pool, setting some policies for those day-to-day operations. Now that the pool has gotten a little bit older and more established, those day-to-day operations are fairly well-established, and we don't need to have the number of meetings of the operating committees we used to have, and they don't function necessarily in the same way. So the Board Directors has proposed that this agreement include a membership committee, which is basically going to be made up of the same people that the operating committee was made up of. Each of the member cities is going to have a voting delegate to the committee, as well as an alternate voting delegate, both of whom are approved by the governing bodies of the member cities. And so that is one change, establishing that. Another change is that the... In the early days of the Kansas Power Pool, there was, of course, at the start, only one employee, basically. And so the pool, in order to operate effectively, and that is to secure transmission through the Southwest Power Pool, and also later on to secure energy sources for the pool, had to have some technical help to do that. So the pool was authorized to hire the Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority, OMPA, who at the time was even serving some of the cities, such as the City of Wellington, when Wellington went into the pool. And they provided the facilitator function for the Kansas Power Pool for several years, actually, until the pool was able to staff up to take care of those daily operations itself with their own employees. And so the... One of the things that this operating agreement does is to delete references to a facilitator, which is no longer needed. And so that's probably one of the biggest changes in this agreement. There are some issues that are basically housekeeping items that are changed within this. There's nothing that has to do with finances, or money, or rates, or anything like that in this operating agreement. It's basically to allow the Kansas Power Pool to continue to operate the way it really has been operating the past few years. Any questions about this one? Do you want me to cover both of them, or wait until you?
Well, I think we have to wait, don't we? Or is it okay? It doesn't matter to me? Yeah, I don't know that it matters. Do you know if it matters? I don't think it matters.
I'll cover the other one.
Okay, that'd be fine, then we can do both resolutions.
Sure. The other resolution has to do with the adoption of... Of the amendment creating... The amendment... The Second Amendment to the agreement creating the Kansas Power Pool. I'm getting that right, I mentioned. This is really the... one of the founding agreements, documents for the pool. And it is strictly governed by state statute. The pool is under state statute. We are a municipal electric energy agency, one or two in the state, and those are established by statute. The amendment creating is... The changes in it is that the membership committee will meet a call of the board president and will meet otherwise annually to adopt the budget and the rates for the pool. Normally, we have a rate forum in November, where we call every... all the members together to discuss how our proposed wholesale rates for the members are calculated. And after that meeting, we have in December our annual meeting, at which time the... all the members get together and decide if they're going to adopt a budget and the rates for the following year. The voting members of the Kansas Power Pool must have signed both the operating agreement and the power purchase contract with KPP, which Wellington has done. And the other important change is that the agreement creating, as amended, sets forth a veto power on the part of the... Of any members with greater than 50% of the peak load who can veto any board action of the Kansas Power Pool. In addition to that, and new to the Kansas Power Pool with this document is a grievance procedure by which members of the membership committee may override by two-thirds during vote any veto of the board action. So you can see that grievances may be redressed formally, as well as informally through this. So I think those are the main changes for the agreement creating.
All right. Share your thoughts.
How do you come up with this wholesale rate? And that's question number one. Question number two, is that based on what? It's shown in the 23 cities that are in this Kansas Power Pool. How do you come up with your wholesale rate? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we forecast... we forecast load, peak demand, and we forecast energy sales that we expect to have for the next year based on factors of history with each of the 23 member cities.
So you project out?
We project out, yes. We project out 10 years. And based on those projections, then we look to find what those... what that load is going to cost us in terms of going out on the... to our contracts, what the capacity payments are going to have to be made by us to the energy sources that we contract with. And also, we look for expected rates from those sources as well. We also have to look at transmission costs. That's part of the demand charge in our rate to you.
That's part of the wholesale charge?
Yes, it is. So we have two parts of our wholesale charge to each of our member cities. One is on demand, so your peak demand every month is what sets the... Helps us set the rate for that, because we have to pay... We have to pay capacity for capacity from our sources. We have some internal capacity. For example, the Wellington Power Plant provides some internal capacity for the Kansas Power Pool. But we also have to purchase capacity, because we don't have enough internal capacity within the pool to provide what the Southwest Power Pool requires for transmission reliability. The other part of it, of course, is the energy charge. And the energy charge is more or less a pass-through from what we are charged for the energy. So the two largest parts of your wholesale energy are the transmission charge, which is part of the demand rate that you pay, and that is passed through from the Southwest Power Pool. We have to pay for using the transmission lines in the power network. And the other largest... largest part of the rate to you is the energy charge.
Yeah.
The low, we use a monthly energy cost adjustment to adjust back to the revenue that we projected we needed to meet our budget.
Okay, where does that revenue go that you just said that you dropped back to? I mean, if it's paid in by the city, and the projection is high, and it comes back, then where does that money go?
Well, if the ECA can go...
It is money.
The ECA can go two ways. If there is a negative ECA, which means we've... If we collected that rate, we would collect more than we need, then a negative ECA is credited to every city on its monthly bill. So we would not collect the ECA that month.
How do they credit that to the city? In what form does that come back to the city?
Well, it doesn't come back to the city. It's reduced from your bill.
It's reduced from the bills.
Yes. Now, a positive ECA means just the opposite. It means that we're going to need a little more revenue in order to meet our budget forecast. So that would be a positive ECA.
Thank you. Good questions, Mr. Malintai. And that cleared it up for me a little bit. And I, being a new person, I'm trying to understand the Kansas Power Pool. The advantage of that, as opposed to being a customer of like a larger utility, like Westar or something, is are we more like a co-op? And it's almost like a Walmart mentality, and the more you have, the more power you have, as far as like the more cities you have involved, you can buy in bulk, and then so we're not having to buy individually city-wise? Is that... am I getting it?
I think those are good analogies. And we oftentimes compare ourselves to a co-op, because we are owned by the 23 membered municipal utilities. So Wellington is a part-owner of this agency. It's a quasi-municipal agency. It's a not-for-profit agency. And so you are the owners, and we work for all of you.
Mr. Lennon?
Carl, this... we were one of the original. How long ago was that?
2005 was when it...
Oh, we're talking about ten years. Do you have any figures of whether you've saved us money or cost us money in the 10 years, whether we hadn't gotten at Kansas Power Pool, or have you saved us money since in the 10 years we've been here?
Well, we like to think we've saved you money, but to be honest, it's very difficult to compare, because we don't always know the rates that others charge, the wholesale rates that others charge. It's very difficult for us to find that information. So, you know, if we had that information, we can certainly compare what our rates would do with the demand and the energy that's used by any city.
I wonder if you see... You could go to a comparable city, it looks like, and get a pretty good idea.
If we can find rates that are comparing apples to apples, which we can't always do, we try, it's sometimes very difficult. We don't know if their rates include, you know, the transmission charge. We don't know if it includes the overhead. There are lots of... As one of our staff members likes to say, there are a lot of moving parts in setting rates by electricity.
And how long is our contract?
Your contract... you signed a power purchase agreement with Kansas Power Pool in 2012 for 20 years. And that was done to help secure the bonds to issue for the acquisition of part of a public energy center in Missouri.
Well, I... we... none of us will beat her, but I would suggest that you have a way to compare apples and apples before that contract runs out, because somebody's going to ask the question, why should we stay in it if it's costing us money?
That's right. We like to think that we provide other services that are value-added services as well. And as the mayor mentioned, you know, if you're going to go out there on your own, if you're going to go to Westar and buy, you know, a short-term contract through Westar, you don't have the... You don't have the reliability of knowing where your energy's coming from, from year to year, basically. And it's... I can tell you from experience, watching the electric energy industry over the last 20-some years, that it has changed tremendously in terms of the technical aspects of it, the, you know, the regulations of it. And so it's become very, very complex.
The reason I'm asking the...
I understand your question.
Yeah, I heard it good and bad, properly. And there's always... there's always that. So why, if it's such a good deal, why are there only 23 cities? Why aren't cities clamoring to get into the Kansas Power Pool?
Cities have different feelings about committing to long-term agreements. That's one of the things we've found. The 23 that are in it now like the... They like the fact that they know where they're going to get their energy for a period of time. They don't want to think about having to go out and negotiate.